Okay, so we're gonna show like what? And welcome all you to the February 7th, uh, 2022. We're in the planning board here. At this time, there was this, everybody there was. The electronic device to shut them off, so unless you can read them. So, and the things that might have to do with this. Uh, it's also the exits are out to the door to the back of the door, either the left or the right down the hall. They're gonna do it really pressure in on the wall. And I see the shelf there, it's all there.
Linda Giroux, Steve Rock, he's not here yet, I said yeah. Uh, Dave Martin, Chris Slater, Mark Palestine, James Massey. And Steve Whitner is up to this.
Um, before we show them, when you're currently in the Steve Rock flat, we're, um... Keep getting a bit of white paper, you know, seeing if you can, and then you go through the way that I'm writing. And, uh, there's some things about solar energy, it's a white paper, it maybe snapped out, it's not gray, it's in the middle. It's, it's a bunch of research done over a couple of weeks by very good methods, there's tests and, uh... It's really more silent one way or the other, but it's, there's a document, uh, Steve, I originally cut some of the down well, there's a, there's a new form for it. But then, but it's just kind of a vision, it's not, it's not nothing like that. Okay, uh, we've got another agenda, can I? Okay, uh, we'll do the pool of January, pool of, that's what I can say. Google about January's now. Any corrections, any additions, um, we will talk about, so.
I'll make a motion for the minutes.
Okay. Okay, so, you, you can put in the votes here.
Linda Giroux, David Martin, Chris Slater, Mark Palestine, James Massey.
Yeah. Okay. Second, uh, January, there's a public hearing, a special use permit, a single apartment in a single family dwelling. Uh, in Morocco, at 251 Lake Road, Westport. You always like to put up and give a little bit of explanation of what you want to do and group the publications.
Okay.
All right, can, all right, thank you. I'm gonna have a review, please, please, my mistake.
I'm public hearing, special use permit to a single apartment in a single family dwelling for William Morocco at 251 Lake Road, Westport. Application of William Morocco, owner William Morocco, seeking a special use permit for town code 520-11A3. At, we have a single apartment in a single family dwelling located at 251 Lake Road, Westport. This is in the RBL zone district and A, tax account number 030.01-002.400. All interested parties will be given the opportunity to hear at this time.
Well, our plan is to add an additional 1,200, maybe just 1,300 square foot, uh, to our existing home, uh, from only half, from our basement. As we are going to add my son and daughter-in-law and two grandchildren that go with me part of the house. Uh, in addition to the 1,200, 1,300 square feet, we're also adding a, a mother who I don't know. Uh, as I drafted a, uh, a, a plan, uh, we tried to incorporate, incorporate it and make it work like it belongs to the house. After that's loaded.
Okay, very good, um... At this time, I'll hold out the public hearing to cameras, anybody from the audience, heard anything to share, questions to ask, who must be Morocco or us? Considerations? Okay, for definitely saying the place is covered. Portion contribution to the meeting and hand it over to the advisory and board members, uh, both here.
No, um, no engineering concerns, uh, built, address the subject capacity. The water system capacity is fine because it's on public water, the parking, the access, the garage. Um, it's a, it's a good sized lot can handle this, so I don't have any engineering concern.
Who? I have no legal concerns, it's for secret purposes, it's a type two, nothing further.
Sure.
I have no concerns, I worked with this in Morocco for a few months, uh, he come in and maybe took it in out, wrote the plan, and he came up with this plan, and I didn't know, I didn't know what it was.
And, wonder?
No, that was just.
When would you put the addition on?
Uh, sometime this spring. Spring, summer's raw, uh, cut. This is, this is, we can get borrowed.
Okay, alright, so you're gonna put another addition under the garage, yeah?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay.
It'll be right next to the existing lot.
Hmm, okay.
Uh, one other thing just need to stop, we are moving the septic system, so we were told that the existing tank is sufficient enough, but I think we are going to upsize it. Just to make sure that it's concept reworked.
Right, which isn't, which isn't terribly old for a tank pipe.
Yeah, but I think, we might be, we might be going for 1,500, just so we're not under.
But I think you had to move it anyway because of the addition, so that's a great idea, yeah.
The comments? The comments? Alright, we're up here and set under closed public hearing, okay, if you'd like to see, okay? And, uh, wait, nobody's gonna pick them, yeah? Okay, uh, we're gonna need, uh, a motion to sit. I'll make a, okay, okay, I'll make a motion here for William Morocco, 251 Lake Road, Westport, uh, for a type two on this just again.
Linda Giroux, yes, Dave Martin, Chris Slater, Mark Palestine, James Massey.
And, uh, I make a motion here now for approval of William Morocco, 251 Lake Road, Westport. Uh, owner William Morocco, seeking a special use permit for town code 520-11A3, at, at, a, a single apartment in a single family dwelling located at 251 Lake Road, Westport. This is in the RBL zone district and A district, tax account 030.01-002-400. All documents submitted for review, matter of intent, application for a single apartment in a single family dwelling, petition sketches, uh, for other property, and the actual 01.
I said that.
And more, please?
Linda Giroux, yes, Dave Martin, Chris Slater, Mark Palestine, James Massey.
Yeah. Good luck, thank you very much for your overall, thank you very much, let's go. Second item, uh, there's a conservation order development permit, January 57, 570 West Potomac Beach, for the name of the generator, I believe. Somebody here will represent. Hmm? Uh, do you wanna paper it, or can we?
You can, you can hold it to the end, and at that point, then you might wanna paper it.
Okay, so that's pretty set, uh, 5700 West Potomac Beach, we'll put to the end of the time, maybe. Okay. Actually, I have another thing, uh, table from January 4th, 2022, uh, 251 Lake Road, Eastport, 733, uh, 734. Even best?
Hi, how you guys doing?
Very good, how are you?
Not too bad. Uh, since last time, um, we talked JP to find out that every good site plan to be in changes, but it's good, I think I sent out the phase in documentation we wanted for how we planned to proceed, um... I think we do like information, because the one that was on there actually is no longer available after a year and a half, so, um, it's similar, but it has all the stats and everything we're talking about as far as type, so, uh, still bring those in. DC is still, uh, definitely, but I assume it'll probably come to this month or so. Everything in the office, you have it, you're still working it? Still working it, yeah. On October, December 28th, he was gonna nudge and see people to find out what's happening, uh, for the, for the, uh... No, I think that was all the things we talked about last week, um, pretty much going to do more than three, um, second part, so step 10, you asked, how did, is there a segment idea, something?
JP?
Really nothing new, we, you know, we have engineered plans now. We have, uh, have what we need for a complete application, so, um, I think the only outstanding item was, uh, delineating what's going to mean as grass areas and what's gonna become gravel or paved. Just wanted if you could find that on the site plan, but it's a very minor detail.
Do you, you have some comments or thoughts?
I, I did, and I, I submitted comments to the, uh, the board earlier today. Uh, the comments speak for themselves, I'll just do a couple quick highlights. In terms of subdivision, if we treat this as a lot combination, we don't need a public hearing, we can just proceed based on the legal notice. Not a lot of changes, uh, from the concept plan, a couple of concerns, so they added some landscaping, but not really a lot. And if the purpose was to buffer the neighboring properties, you may not find that to be adequate. They did add fence and park, and that, that does add some buffering.
Um, we were talking, uh, you had a wrong one.
I'm sorry, am I in the wrong one?
You had the wrong one.
Forgive me.
We're, we're in for Marina.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have to do that.
It wasn't originally on the agenda.
Right, it wasn't, it wasn't ever there.
Well, that explains why I have Marina comment, uh, materials on my desk, I apologize. Well, those aren't very relevant comments, are they?
As soon as you got the defense here, that's right, I'm going, who is the picture there, go down, and, uh, we'll make a, I'll be able to push it all against the facts.
You know, as Gil Doradon would say, never mind.
Yeah, we see that, everybody's familiar with it, so, um, we're pretty good with what's, what was you there? And the script, and, and we can move on.
I, I have nothing new to add, uh, uh...
Keep him in the mix for what kind of frame he has, just, I kind of, you know, is that you like to move on and don't be very popular here.
Did you give me application complete, I'm certain?
I completed it up, okay, that's, first we were on deck, well, JP, if he was able to, uh, come up with, uh, green areas, and we're gonna be explaining it, a public hearing, would there be, uh, appropriate?
I think we're, yeah, I would say, yes, I mean, we're redeveloping the site, it's, he's making improvements, I, I think, uh, they're in a good space, we have engineered plans now, so, I'm in good shape.
You know, with throwing in a March comment, you, you, you happen on the door, you're seizing, okay, so, that's why I'm asking that, you know, the other question that I have is, uh, for short, you know, that, you know, is, uh, appropriate in this space since it's an existing business? There's no real major changes, I don't know, and, uh, what the other regulatory agencies have to deal with, uh, and...
I mean, I would say it's probably an unnecessary action, and you're gonna have to, um, you certainly can do a non-coordinated review, and it can be quick and easy. Uh, I don't think there's anything, because it's a redevelopment of a site, that would need to go to a coordinated review, uh, or, you know, prolong that process, so...
It, it does not appear to cross any of the type 1 guidelines, it's very, very, the support for the A F P discipline.
Sure.
Can we talk to the district, you see the bigger points of course, before we, I believe on a interstate, it's coming before next month? Before a public hearing, if you schedule it?
Any work that's gonna be regulated by the D E C, gotta be regulated by the D E C. If there's a, tell, seen a copy of the letter, the, the letters that he sent out there in the house, he's in process, okay? So, um, just if he decides to do some work, because outside of the scope of that, there will be a few other decisions, uh... So, I mean, he wouldn't, he wouldn't be allowed to start work until the, the D E C come up there.
A couple people, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that there's any hurting over the white line.
Oh, yeah.
You know, there wasn't enough. Mm. The car people didn't smell.
Oh, we did. It's a good game.
Corner.
Yeah.
Very good.
Although, no, I have two people down there that left this down there.
There's definitely no brown in the wood floor.
Yeah, I can see how it's probably like turned out.
Yeah.
Well, I'm probably right there. So, all right, I'll see you later. Thank you very much for your experience. I'll be back.
All right. Next item on the journey is the M O L C seventeen twenty two, seventeen thirty Lake Road. And then seventeen and four. Good evening, everybody. Matt Thomas with American Engineering. Got a couple of things I'd say there. And I think we had it as well. There's three of those trees on the street that we found here. I do want to leave. These are revised a little bit.
Yeah.
I think even if you want to reach out and work on the time factors, I feel like JP's gonna have to show us some.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, everybody. Matt Thomas and American. I know Don Bruce from my office was here to present this at a concept level to the board a few weeks ago, and we have since addressed the plans to the preliminary statement of question, preliminary approval, which we, of course, would anticipate would be conditioned on comments received and revising as necessary. So just to orient the board, we're at the southeast corner of Lake Road and Ridgeville Highway. We're eighteen. The concept plan that we presented previously with configurations and dimensions is essentially the same as what we presented last time, and we have now submitted a full set of engineering drawings with quite a bit of additional detail, including grading, landscaping. And then in front of you is the package that kind of shows the perspectives and the site along with some of the architectural materials. I wanted to talk about the site plan briefly if I could first, and then we can give them whatever detail the board has. We also have received some comments from the town attorney that we can address that he gave us a little preview a little earlier, so I'm forewarned, and I'm sure JP's gonna have some comments as well. So seventeen twenty-two and seventeen thirty Lake Road, we are looking to combine those two. I know I have a patient or two, as we did say subdivision, but we're looking for those straightforward lot combinations to create a single parcel for this development to be on it. What we're proposing is a gas station convenience store with an end cap drive-through tenant, which will be located on the north side of the building with stacking and fueling around it to the east. A car wash, which will be a two-lane car wash with a bypass lane to ensure no one gets stuck with those malfunction or fueling to block clients or customers from being able to get around that drive-through. I do have some information on the noise and whatever question that was raised earlier. We have a vacuum station off of the driveway to the north that will connect to Ridgeville Highway, and then a four double-sided pump configuration underneath the tenant with some signage and parking both at the front of the convenience store as well as the front of the lot. The lot as it exists today is almost a hundred percent pavement and building. We're going to be reducing that from roughly ninety percent down to seventy-four percent in purchase, and while that is certainly above the allowable allowable by code, it's closer to the code than what exists out there today. One of the other things that we heard from you folks was relative to screening to the neighbors, and we are proposing a six-foot fence around it. We have gone back and forth between the wooden stockade fence, which would just be close with a fence on the outside of the neighbor's side. Like I already said, a board-on-board fence, which would not be as solid from an angle view, but would dress up the inside of it, which is what the majority of the customers and public are gonna see within there. We is also hoping to some different materials that the board feels strongly about what that fence looks like, and we can accommodate some of the discussion there I anticipate tonight. On the building itself, what's represented in the package that I handed out today is a perspective view kind of from the southwest, looking at the corner of it with some massing of neighboring buildings, one being the church on the south, and then a mixed use on the corner there. And kind of gives you a perspective of the layout that's shown in two D on the plan along with representative signage at the front along the Route nineteen frontage. The second page is a layout of the interior of the convenience store space, just to give you an idea of what that's going to look like. The third page is a perspective from the southern entrance on the site, and that southern entrance just oriented borders is roughly here on the roadway, giving you a view of the signage, the canopy, and the convenience store behind it. On the convenience stores specifically on the last page that I brought in, gives you the material palette that the architect has put together and where that's going to be located on the building, and so it gives you a feel for the window frames, the metal roofing, the hurting board siding, and a couple of different tones to break up that aside, and then some stacked stones in there along the bottom of that building. And I'm sure the fans know the other properties. These are very nice looking buildings that we and the folks put together.
My second speaker, I just went back to a point of location in the greater Rochester area. Of course, this is a family-owned business, which is headquartered in New York, and we're looking to expand our footprint, and we've identified this part of this a natural part of our growth, and like I said, if timing works out the way it would, this would be pretty nice and location for us being a pinpoint.
All right. I can, at this point, turn it over to the board and ask them if they have questions, or I did get given a copy of the attorney's desk comments, which I'm happy to run through quickly if that were facilitated, some of the discussion.
Mostly the items I already brought up with Don and Huser previously. Clearly, you're on two state roads, so waiting for input from the state about entrance requirements, you know, having the two entrances on nineteen and the one on eighteen. I'm sure they're gonna have input regarding configurations for much more, so I'll defer on those ones, but they could, you know, roll into the site plan also, what the state decides.
And we have reached out to the state with our preliminary plans in order to start that conversation because they're not always the kind of response.
No, I'm dealing with DOT can be kind of... Couple other things I brought up with with Don, and I think we spoke about the concept phase. We do have Tops down the street, we have Crosby's in the other direction, and, you know, the Four Islands seems like a lot for, given that we have these other fueling stations nearby. It's a it's a business decision for you folks, of course, but it doesn't seem, it just seems like a lot for giving that location, but that's in your business model. So we just asked that you review that. There is a bypass lane around the proposed car wash area. At the station, I think it's Speedway now, on Ridge Road and Clarkson, they have a similar car wash, and they proposed a bypass, and we requested it not be added to reduce the amount of pavement. It didn't seem to be necessary, given the other pavement in the area, and it would buffer the properties to the south and to the east. You know, it didn't seem like it necessary to have that bypass around the around the car wash.
Yeah, so can we explore that one a little bit?
Sure.
Because I think Lou obviously got some justification for that, just in how the operation works, so we'll have to do that a little bit.
Yeah, and what we want to try to do is nail your idea up with our operational needs, and given the potential for cars.
So let's just so, yeah, just so you know, this is a two-bay car wash, so not a single. So if it's a single, I think it's very straightforward. Folks, if they get tired of waiting or blocked out, or somebody gets stuck in there, they could just bypass without a problem. But, and Lou, sorry to point it out, but just sort of the way you understand it.
As moving there, so it could be a problem here, so we would really like a need for a customer to be able to see if you were this bypass lane. However, in looking at the plan, what I suggest is we just shift everything north, and we don't need this bypass lane here, and the car could just go around. It's because if it's a car that's here or here, they're already past this point, and then we can go around here, but we'll just move and shorten this up over here, adding the additional landscaping we're looking for and to give this a little bit more connected to the property.
I think, yeah, I mean, my looking there was, yes, look, if we can reduce paving, increase buffers to the neighboring properties.
We should do that with my suggestion.
Yeah, and I guess the only thing about reducing, removing a car wash to the north would be considering, you know, making sure we have appropriate emergency access.
Yeah.
Well, we would, because we would still maintain this around, so we would still have that that emergency access.
And we're, as part of the DOT, we're doing a requirement that the design vehicle has to drive it to the site as well as emergency vehicles, so for our final application, we'll include those neighbors in the package.
Yeah, so that that seems like a reasonable compromise to me.
And so, I know neighbors is gonna be a comment that comes up, and so, obviously, Lou wants to be good neighbors. He makes people accept that under his store, so we want to make sure that.
I mentioned we're locally all, you find us real easy.
Yeah. So, so we are sensitive to that, and we have some things that we've added into the site plan, and there was comment about letting, I have a feeling, some comment about noise, so we can continue to have that discussion as we go through this year's comments.
Now, we're having this again. Steve, as I did, help me with this. This shows rerouting of the additional problem, root sewer that you had there. And I know there's some issues when there was the truck bay that was in there in previous. I don't know if that's still tied in, or if it was backfill or whatever, but this kind of straightens the sewer out a little bit. Why did it?
Why did it make that jog years ago? You're asking why did it jog years ago? I believe it, because if you remember before they built that building, you remember Bob Under's store used to be?
Right, he was up a little bit.
It would, because that jog actually went, now, I can't say, just gotta ask people that don't know, but that jog went exactly up to where Bob Under's store used to be.
The original store.
The original store, on next to the road.
Two pumps, the wooden building.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it did in the seventies.
Yes, it was like that in the seventies, whatever, so I think that's why the sewer jogged like that years ago. I've asked a few people, and everybody just goes, I don't know, but it goes right towards where that store used to be, the original founders.
Yeah, right now, that kind of goes in a view like this, and we're just gonna pick that view out and straighten it out.
Yeah, it used to be like a white store, we used to go there with kids up front by the road, that that store used to be years ago. And I think that's why the sewer jogged like that.
You know, any other laterals went to the corner lot, it comes off of that?
Not that I know of. Everything goes behind the buildings and everything, you know, it just went up, made that weird jog like that.
Has this ever been permanent?
It's just, not years.
By the corner lot there? We have not permanent it. I know that we have no time here relative to any, the concept that's got pulled up directly with the sewer folks, so whether that's excavation or walnut to remove it from that fill or camera or a foreman, we think that's no time like that.
See, but it could be a lateral coming through that.
The only lateral I know of is the one that they put a block on when Mark, when the people bought, the one that used to go to the Dutch Street, there's a lateral to that. And Mark went and dug that up, because I was there with him, he asked if I'd be there, and he dug it up, found the line and kept it. So that there is a lateral there that went to Little Dutch Street, the property that they want to combine, that goes to the main sewer. If they find it on a cap or whatever, back or the farther, they have to dig whatever, I mean, that's, but that's the only level I know of.
Well, it's, you know, it's a definite improvement for your transition there to go through there, just going to make sure that you don't have any sewers holding off site.
Now, the ones across the road that behind is too soon, like going down.
It's probably more important probably to be a good neighbor.
Yeah, they want the soil less to flush after they're done. That's right. Yeah, that's for sure. Yeah, so we have some good notes about the process that the contractor is gonna need to follow, and we, of course, I'm assuming we'll have some kind of a pre-construction meeting we talked about at the contract with the elected, and make sure that the town's notified when we're out on site.
Are we good, Lou?
Yeah, we've touched on it, engineering issues, yeah.
Hey. Yes, sir. Not to repeat myself. Why don't we do that? I did write a letter today with a number of comments. First comment is that if this is gonna be a preliminary site plan, the board needs to be sure that we put a punch list together of conditions that drive us towards a final site plan. Otherwise, a preliminary approval without any conditions might as well be a final approval. On the issue of subdivision, as I indicated, while this is technically a subdivision, as the business commonly described with state law, here in the town of Hamilton, we have a provision in the code that allows us to do a lot of combination without public here. I had noted earlier that the plan, and they've indicated this, that the concept and the plan before you is fundamentally the same. My concerns remain, as JP talked about, landscaping. Not a lot of landscaping has been added, mostly to the back of the main building, some near the vacuums up near Route eighteen, but not, well, not any substantive landscaping that would add buffering to the neighbors. Oftentimes, what you do is you put in a fence, and then you put landscaping at the same time, the fence balances in time until the landscaping goes into place. Well, there is no landscaping for the most part. I did notice on the plan, and I don't know if this is practical, but I'll throw it out there anyway, there looks to be some asphalt east of the site. I don't know if that's asphalt being used by the property owner to the east, who I believe is the seller of the property, isn't that Danale? Maybe you could pick up ten feet from them, and that would rather perhaps resolve the issue. I don't, I think, I just look at this and assume it's leftover paving from the previous owner, Bob's. I don't know if that's true, or it's just what I'm seeing here.
It seems like some kind of surety management or some kind of, you know, for when the new store was put in, so that they could get emergency equipment and stuff around it and some storage. But this is also, this area that is shown here, you still got, it says there's called parking lot, is about the only access to this parcel in the back. And without that access point, we don't have a lot of this other parcel.
Well, then, if that's the case, then that's a no buy.
Just something to look at. So we have reviewed the extract, there's probably been a survey, there was no agreements, there's no formal agreements that we've been able to find, so the intention, and it was just sort of, cut it up the line and then it was around and be there.
Yeah, that was their preference.
Just a question.
Yep.
Okay. She wants to put it up the way. But, yeah, there is gonna be some more for additional. There is quite a bit of landscaping that's there now, there's, you know.
Can I make a comment? Yes, Steve, and I was looking at the plan, and I do agree, I think it would be better to reposition the landscaping that I'll call for right behind the building, and maybe put it in front of the fencing, as we're talking about, and let that building give it, I wanna call it a double buffer, but you'll have the landscaping and the fencing as a buffer, rather than that fencing, excuse me, rather than the landscaping that's right behind the store. I don't think that's a collective issue, if you can, you know, put it over here, over here, and preposition it so it's more visible to the community.
So, yeah, and if we can talk about the buffering, a six-foot-high solid fence will buffer quite well, especially when we're talking about cars coming through, you might see a car over, that kind of thing. And planting on the inside of the fence, well, number one, the fencing would be approximately a foot inside the property, and otherwise, we're getting the property to our neighbors, right? So putting fencing on the outs, or landscaping outside of the fencing would not necessarily work either for you or for the neighbors, just because the fence ends up being stuck in. So what we are proposing is screening in the areas that we feel are a little bit more sensitive, especially up along the backings in that area, and then providing fencing essentially along the perimeter of the perimeter all the way up here to the north, because we do think that that's the best solid screening, if you will, for that. It also will help attenuate noise. Landscaping noise will move to, unless you can burn up earth in order to also stop that. So typically, there's a combination that can be had there, but we do feel that the fence is gonna be the best long-term solution. And easiest to maintain, we have quite a long perimeter here, in front of maintenance, and you want that to become somewhat difficult, and kind of grow a solid hedge that has snow piled up against it and that kind of thing. As far as sensitivity to neighbors, we have pulled the pavements back quite a bit from the original concept plan, especially along this east line. We also only have one light with a half-size shield up along the egress for the drive-through in this area, so we try to keep lighting as much as we can away from there. We also only have one along the south line there, and then no, we have a half-size shield. So we are attempting to pull things into the site as much as we can, given the constraints that we have. And again, we're reducing the perjuice on the site by approximately fifteen percent. So while there may not be fully loaded with landscaping, we are adding quite a bit of green to the site through those changes.
Just one, um, I'm gonna see.
You're gonna, it's something that we're gonna put in, what, what kind of, do you wish for?
Well, we've got some stuff specified, there's perennial, spider beetle is a, is a. Usually, those are very sensitive to salt, and so we try to keep something that's gonna stay clean and flowing, spraying. We are putting, we are putting evergreens along that side near the bathrooms and a couple other spots, but for the most part, we're using the city streets, yeah.
I agree with you, you're right.
I didn't look at my listing numbers, but I thought it was, we want to drive business to live.
If you, if you do that car wash one way or the other, you're gonna have room for delivering vehicles to get around behind the building and come back around the front without, you know.
The wheel is coming to the front door.
Yeah, as it leaves, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Lots of shit about that.
Yeah, and again, we'll have to provide some vehicle around, if JP's talking about emergency vehicle, being able to route that way. But typically, anything that a fire truck can get through, any delivery vehicles can overcome the bigger tankers, and that's really, and then take the front to where it is.
That's a, most of those are, of course.
Yes.
They're all part of the project.
Lot of places that park on the road and unload, right? Right on the highway and, and, not, not these guys, but.
In this really replenishment, the bigger storage is all of the bases, and so I'm starting to top notch and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, you don't have loading docks, right? Things like that, it's, it's hand trucks and wheelies that go right through the front doors.
I wonder if you could describe that fence a little bit, what type of material, or you're thinking about, you had mentioned hotset fence, this is a solid fence, this is a carpet, you know, is that traditional in there at all, or?
I'd go, I'd go with a color panel, something a little solid like that.
And my other question is, could you describe that, if I had a snowstorm?
I hope it's not snow as much as it does.
Good luck with that, wow, luck with that.
Unless you've got some beavers or something.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
That was before that, you're, uh, early, you worked with.
And you'll, as you'll notice from the concept, the board director has changed it significantly. And some of the things that we did do is we pulled the pavements in quite a bit. Before, we were only a couple feet inside, now we've got at least ten feet from the property line, nine feet on the one side, fifty, twenty-five feet down here, ten feet along this whole side in order to facilitate wind going every round. We also have provided quite a good-sized green space at the front for those fronts. That's the largest area that has to be pushed, and so we've got almost fifty feet before that section of sidewalk that we're adding in there in order to pilot. So most normal storm events, we've got some pretty good-sized areas where they didn't have it before to set that snow and get it to where it is.
If that's not adequate, we will truck it out.
That was a step in the group, so.
Quite a bit less pushed out towards the property line than we had before, correct?
I mean, utilities going all in, snow storage, ES five, you might want to pull in a section or a further, other than it's spoiled up, because when they come in, they have this snow storage, you know, they're on top from two different areas. This is straight run, you've got that crazy stuff. So if you bury it and it freezes, it's gonna affect the snow storage building on this side here, and I've seen this a lot before, so if you were to extend it out maybe a hundred ten feet, it's gonna be the only way you can fit it when you're not clear, so, or in the day, you're not gonna see it really.
Yeah. We will definitely take a look at that, we're very limited on how much fall in the glass here, and I'm sure, you know.
You know, realistically, with this same shell, it's gonna freeze first, yeah. It's a, yeah.
Yep, absolutely. One thing that we didn't talk about, I've said it three times, I feel we didn't talk about is decibel landscape, so we've got some manufacturers' information at forty feet away, which we are forty-five feet at a minimum from any property line, forty feet away with the door closed, is sixty-four decibels. Normal conversation right now, I'm talking right now, is about sixty decibels, slightly below the normal level. Eighty to eighty-five is the lawn mower, snow blower, leaf blower type thing. Where the door's open at forty feet, it's eighty decibels, so around that leaf blower level. So that's the noise level, interior to the property line slightly above out there, so I just wanted to give you guys a feel with that information, so that you understand that it's, yes, when the doors are open, when they open to let someone else, the blowers are final going, that's a very, that's a time.
And that's very, yeah, but that's, that's.
That's on the east side.
This side closed, existing was not.
The west was always closed.
When, when the, that is, yeah. So that would be, well, that would be almost eighty feet from that open door pointing in the other direction to the property line there, so it would be obviously lower than the sixty-four, that's for that forty feet outside of that closed door. So I think, you know, we're well below any type of annoyance level, if you will, from a, from a loudness standpoint, I think it's definitely, like anything background, I said, we're still going to feel, but it's not gonna be at a high level at all, being an annoyance to, to, I guess.
But not the ordinary speaker, you know, if I pick up on what you want, then you say, okay.
Yes, so.
That's similar, and that can be adjusted, so that's a similar, not as well as the matter. Yeah, maybe you get to the fencing after.
And what we have also done with that, it was somewhat intentional, sliding that down and orienting it to the south, kind of to that same, where this point, the roar of the sound, to try to, and, 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 that though.
Drive-throughs, you showed one drive-through out there?
Yes.
Like McDonald's or something, if they weren't for kids, or.
Two, two whippers. This would be one.
This is one.
Paying and pick up your, your, all the.
Sure, down that wall, yeah.
Like a Dunkin' Donuts, but, is that essentially what we're talking about here?
Quick service restaurant, like, could be, could be similar brand for popular.
We should put more of those.
All right. So we're talking, we're talking to a couple.
So, 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 we'll tell you, we'll tell you a couple.
I thought I heard somebody say Hardees, and, and one, because that Hardees store is very, very small. I guess I was the person that brought up the noise, and my, my concern was service services Sunday morning. And I've been to a few car washes in the last couple weeks. I'm using the one that my Chevy pickup was shaking from the air, it was rather, it was fucking different.
So, well, the key to that is the doors being closed in that, that, that sign, it's not, and the, you stop on church. And, and from all the fence, also, so.
And I think if we, if we realize who the, you know, the church has been, uh, for a long time, that if they get away from us, we have to shut down, we have to, we have to.
Absolutely, and I, I would be the one coming, uh, to tell you the service, so.
What's that, the doors for service or car wash, that's how you look at yourselves in it, or whatever.
But, but these car washes are different than your, um, royal, royal car wash or your, um, deltas, where your, it's conveyor belt type thing, this is pulling, close the door, correct me when I go off, pulling, close the doors, the operation happens, and it's one car at a time.
One car at a time, and then both doors are closed, but.
Right, it's gonna be awesome, yeah.
So, but, but one door just opens when the car is gone, but it still stays closed behind you.
Yeah, I mean, I have, I only show like a shaking in the last.
We were talking about the.
Yeah, and we're about a hundred and ten, hundred and twenty feet, uh, from the, again, the exit, behind where the routers where the door opens, to that, that wall, the red panel, which is so.
And I would commit, I don't think they're gonna have it, to be a, to be, to be.
And how about the sign out the front? Uh, you're coming to the noise, you live behind the church.
Mm-hmm.
Coming from the south, from the south side of the church to the north, it was, it was precious. Yeah, but what you saw in your drawings is that stone with the sign, uh.
Yeah, the ma- mostly, you're gonna hit a height of, uh, eight or ten foot. Yeah, that, that would be, that's typically a more decorative sign, I mean, if the signage allows us to go with something higher, we certainly would consider that, but the purposes of rendering trying to pick our, our more aesthetic pleasing sign.
That matches with the, um, hall sign, uh. Yeah, they look, they look, they, they look really good.
The last one we're.
They got a warranty that one, uh, three dollars and forty-eight cents, yeah.
Yeah, let's talk crazy.
We've had to update, update that quite a bit.
Yeah. Where is your fuel provider?
Uh, fuel, we, we buy it, um, through the, um, the removal, or there'll be a, that could be done, that, that is left, left to be determined. So typically, uh, fuel providers need petroleum, uh, or, or, yeah.
Well, pricing here seems to be a lot higher than other places in the, in the city. But I don't know, but when the fuel's coming out back to the, speeding around the bump water area, up in this, gotta go longer, longer route, there's a product someplace between our town and Golden Pond, which stuff comes out of, uh, dispatching, uh, gas by the way, in the city. Uh, if you can, if you can tax gears, or the other cars, because it's a taxidermy, so probably a lot, okay? But if you pay two fifty-nine, year, the tax, you were a special worker, okay? You're gonna, you're always, you know, that I'm paying up with, can't sell this stuff, because you can't just pass on street. And then, you know, just because of words being a little bit, you know, you should have some kind of, yeah, relationship with which you're spending your kind of storage, and you can be more reliable.
From the sale in the area, that would keep everybody checking pricing too, right?
Yeah. You're a safe location, right?
Uh, there might be a ten, fifteen seat, uh, pounding area, where, where, maybe you're at the quick service restaurant, grab me a slice of pizza, something like that, so.
Yes, I would be, I'd be, I'd be, I'd be, yeah.
Do you want the whole seat? Are you, are you, are you ordered?
No, I'm dropped the rest in the morning.
Oh, okay.
But thank you.
Questions, insurance? Um, it goes without saying that the thing in the process, at the end of the perimeter, he's probably, uh, based on what he knows or everything, so we'll discuss it if we need, okay? And, um, until it's, still could be a go ahead for the entrances, and we're sad, but we really don't know. So it's gotta be a perimeter, too.
That's correct, okay. Think about it, with the comeback, with more data, it's unfeasible.
We, we would appreciate a preliminary approval with conditions, if that, if that. Someone wants to, uh, do, do secret preliminary final?
Yeah.
Be saying that.
Yeah.
Well, I thought so, but I'm, I'm gonna do it though.
Yeah.
For the corner.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's a halfway, half-screwed approval.
Yeah. When you go ahead, you're preliminary approval, and then you have to go to public hearing.
Well, you have to have a public hearing.
Yeah. So you can't do preliminary, you can do concept.
I thought we already did concept, it's part of, is this concept?
This is, there was a stress panel before.
Okay, I thought this was noticeable. But, yes, we have to have a public hearing, if this is not the most for public hearing, yes, we have a problem.
Will, will we notice for a public hearing?
He just wants the photo, like, uh.
That's all we're seeing.
You, you cannot go.
You can't go playing with it.
You, you could actually hand them the, the stuff you're concerned about right now, that punch, this. But it won't be binding, and it's not an approval preliminary or otherwise.
But you can schedule a public hearing, and do secret preliminary and final.
Yeah.
After your public hearing.
Yes, I, I agree with that, and actually, this, this has come up before. It is better, generally speaking, to do secret along with the approvals at the same time. There are a few projects where you don't do that, this is.
So, you want a, a question here for, uh, the, for, for, is, we, because we can't make a preliminary, and we're, 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 we're without a, all of that, all right? We have a very complete plan for preliminary review if we have time, all right? Um, you still have some questions, and we'll have to answer. The timing is, it's either we go for a preliminary next month, and then file a month before, or in one day after, I mean. Or we try to roll it all into one, and one meeting, and that performance driven, to meet the needs of what we recognize tonight, and, uh, ask the seven years for next month. Are you ambitious to, you know, the word there?
Very ambitious, I, I, I would, I would.
There's performance, they're each built on you.
I guess so. And that's great, that's fair enough, and I've taken some notes, and I'm, and if I've missed anything, I'll get your notes. I think we can go at this pretty hard, and, um, you know, the DOT is, is, is a little bit of a wild card, but if we could schedule something that your next meeting would be the public hearing and the secret and preliminary, and hopefully get, get the final, that, that would be great. Put it on us, we, we've gotta give you, uh, the diligence and the work that you need, but anything that.
Well, this also could help you out with a state.
Yeah, the, the pressure point that I find that works down there, I'll let you know, but, uh.
Every one of us here has pretty shoulders. But I did, I still, I still win.
Well, if, if, if we could, then, what I'd like to, uh, what I'd like to ask is, if we could just run very quickly through the notes that we had, make sure we've captured your comments, we understand it would be traditional addressing engineering comments, and having at least a letter from the state DOT that says, your driveway configuration is approvable, or we can issue a permit once we get to that, uh, because a warrant issue permits, it's like a contract on board and insurance is anyhow a thing else.
And you hit the moment before, that, to, to schedule a public hearing, maybe in the middle of a couple, couple of weeks, if you have to pull out, if you can do it, it's straight.
I'm assuming we have to have the state DOT, not a time of the hearing, or, but you're saying.
Not by, well, before we ever have, you know, just to show that, to go through our, if you can't meet that.
Okay.
I'm still, so when are we gonna do that?
It's gonna be March seventh, that's the date you're looking at, it's gonna be only March seventh. We identify, uh, Tuesday, February twenty-seventh.
Uh, two whole weeks, that's still good. One, I usually do that. So, are we saying that we can ask for our public hearing without having the state DOT? Are we doing the plan?
No.
I'm gonna take some.
No. What, it'd be tough to do a final approval with that, but you don't know where things are gonna go.
Well, I, again, we have reached out knowing the time that, that it takes them sometimes. So what we typically will be, is either email or a letter response that says, your configuration is good, move on to the next step we extended, and a commercial comment like this goes through these, that's asset preliminary final, and dislike, like, the board process. So if we get something that's ready, strong, and that states, your driveway configuration is approvable, address these next, you know, how, how would they anticipate that, give them up to see this, or the rock, and, 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 geometry and. Uh, we, we, we'll do the parameters real quick.
Yeah, no, I, I'll be happy to read what I, what I have, please, let me know if I've missed anything. Uh, or the first thing I wrote down was the DOT, which we just had about, review the number of pumps on the side. Uh, we, we locate the bypass lane for the car wash, so we're gonna move the car wash more, vice versa, and.
Increase the buffer.
Increase the buffer, uh, so we've got more, more green space area there, uh, this is gonna be a lot combination. We're gonna relocate landscaping that we originally had at the back of the building, and we're gonna relocate that around the site, so it's more visible to the customers and the residents in, uh, in the area. Uh, we'll, I should, label a white vinyl fence that'll be on the perimeter of the site. We're looking at this.
Well, you're deluging the gas prices, so.
I'm sorry, everyone is talking, I'm seeing visible.
Uh, make sure you write that down.
I got you.
Down on the, on my, 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 I like the, I'm reading through that, uh, throughout the country, yeah.
Snow storage. Snow storage, show where your snow storage is going, and, um, verify any red or, uh, yes, paper.
Televising.
At least go inside the building and see which way the sewer's going.
Cause it's coming to the south, gonna, gonna, yeah. Well, I mean, if we find something, we are shortening the sewer, which means we've got a little more slope to it, we absolutely time anything that we, we find, that should not be initially.
We're gonna come in here, man, turn that sheet, you know?
That's a town, too.
Oh, it's a town, too. Who did the design in there?
Old McFarland and McFarland or something? I was about three and a half years old when that was.
Uh, I'm sure. Anything else that we, that we missed, or we did not say after our notes, that we need to make sure we address when we come up?
Okay, the other issue I need to work on after is that I've got a fine concern about noise to the church. As it got to the church. Probably noise study that you provided, and.
Yeah, also that it is part of our material for the plant's consideration.
Can you guarantee a decibel level at the fence line, which actually would be the band line on the, on the east side?
Band line on the east side?
Yes.
Yes, cause our study has that.
Okay.
Yes.
With the fence, uh, yeah, could, I want to alleviate that, yeah, but it says, this is, the studies that they do is open with no sprinkling. See, they just said it was build a design, you know, the doors on the north side. Okay, because that's where all this noise is, 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 right, shouldn't, and, uh.
East, east.
Oh, you said.
Yes, so our study will say, and I wasn't, we'll give it two ways, when the door is closed and the cars being parked, and then when it's open and the cars leaving, the, the study will have a, for, for the, where it is, that's.
Well, what I'm thinking of, from a regulatory point of view, code enforcement, is that if they're gonna give us a DB level we can rely on, we could take a DB, like, you know, meter to the property line for other neighbors to play defense, if it's over the line, or it's not. I'll leave it at that.
Typically, yeah, and we have that, like, is there a noise ordinance in the, the decibel level at property line?
Uh, we have a decibel level, but we do have noise, yeah, you can hear noise, like, from a power muckler, or.
Too vague.
Yeah, it is vague, and even stereo, it's too vague, it's like fifty, see, you can hear, maybe it could be a hose door.
And, and besides, the planning board can impose its own design restrictions, which would deal with noise, just like you deal with energy or anything else.
Right, it'll prove that, that the study proposed this number.
Do you need, do you need a classification board issue, or?
No, I'm just prepared to prove the, I, I think that all we're taking is an area of surface, but, not to really, you. Um, I just have one question, you said that you have twenty-four other unit stores in the area?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I mean, can you name some of the locations, so maybe somebody could, uh, look at your.
Oh, our, our, uh, newest location is, is in Belmont, but it's a little bit, uh, of a bigger facility where they have on, where, um, Grace, uh, where Webster, uh, but someone would just, uh, can you name, I'd be happy to give you the specific addresses. Uh, I'd be happy to go over the rehise station, um, in, 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 uh.
Uh, this is probably the closest, and that you've mentioned so far.
Okay, that's, um, made mine in Long Island, so it's, it's a smaller facility, but it does, that one does have a different diameter, no car wash, because it's such small, so.
Further across from the, from there, that's over there?
Um, not, not, oh, not at Long Island, yeah, no, no. So if someone were to, um, yeah, my number's seven, six, two, two, eight, 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 six, zero, call me or text me at that number, and you want, or, and I'll give a specific address. Seven, six, two, two, eight, 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 six, zero.
There's your website, I noticed, there's, uh, there shows all those, uh, places.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, I think that would be helpful. See what can push them?
So, I'm doing, we're doing, I'm 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 doing. Okay, I'm making a, a little, a little motion, I'm, I'm also making a, I'm making a motion that, uh, to, 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 public hearings for March seventh, at seven o'clock for then, and final second approval for P, 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 LLC, at seventeen twenty-two, for that seventeen thirty-one road. It's also includes a lot combination.
When it's low?
Yes.
Made mountains?
Yeah.
Or slider?
Yes.
It's not fall out?
Yeah.
Yeah, throw it out.
There you go.
Okay, that's good, thank you, appreciate it, I appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is a separation of land. And the next happening will be a settlement with your. How are you guys? How you doing?
Yeah, we're doing all right.
How you doing? What I'm planning on doing, I just wanna take five acres off of that group. What I'm planning on doing, I just wanna take five acres off and then I'll go to my son. And he's gonna build a house there. I got the engineers done already, the architect for the house and everything is all done. The engineer comes already, you know, settling and everything for the lot. For the sewer, everything, for the stuff. Time, gas, water, nothing there. And he's trying to make the family simple, just square out.
Let's keep you in the right direction. J P.
First thing is the application is all for the main subdivision and the net, the drawing prepared by Jim Gudowski says the mat subdivision.
Yeah, mat, okay, that's my son.
Okay, so the application and the drawing have different names?
Yeah, it's gonna be land, it's gonna be in the mat same.
So the application and the drawing should have the same one? They don't have the same name. Um, yeah, so it's gonna need, uh, department of health approval for the.
We got the health department already with the. The, the perp testing.
Yeah, well, they'll provide a standup on it, Rodney.
Yeah.
And then, uh, water authority will have to approve the water service, uh, the details.
You just have to have a cap, obviously, to run the water first.
Yeah, and they need this, the, the water authority details. Um, Drake Road is a town road, so there's a town road, uh, access detail. It requires at least the, the suction in the road right away to be paved. The rest of it can be gravel, but it has to be paved to have the caption, you know, so we don't beat up.
Four foot eight, right, or four?
Uh, to the right away, which, you know, it's a.
Yeah.
Forty-nine and a half foot right away, so it's probably the first fifteen twenty-two.
All right, no problem.
Um, so, yeah, we need, we need the town right away detail, health department approval, water authority approval. Other than that, it's a, it's, you know, fairly straightforward subdivision and fairly straightforward, I think.
So I have the plans, J P, we need, uh, signature lines and seal, uh, locations for the water authority, for the water county health department. Now, when the health department got here, it could have made their perp and everything, I already told you, how many foot sand we need and everything. That should be outside with the health department then, right? Is there an alter that gives a perp testing? Or people testing and everything?
It has to be incorporated around the whole site plan. So it needs to have signature lines.
I think it's on the set plan that I, I gave the sheriff.
How do we stop the plans?
No, the, for the engineer plans, they're.
These plans?
Yes. It should have everything on it from the health department, what they need.
Well, you have to get their signature approving what you show, that's all. The engineer should get it for you.
The engineer should be able to get it for you. The engineer also needs to supply a, uh, can I get a location map? Uh, if you're ready, bring at least the North Arrow. The North Arrow's on it.
There's a little location sketch in the upper, upper left.
So, uh, Jim?
Jim Gudowski.
Gudowski.
Yeah, he just got out, he was in a hospital for two months, he had COVID, he almost died.
Yeah, I heard that.
He just got out, so his son, he was trying to help him, he had a little bit now, but he almost died, he was in it for like two or two and a half months. His son didn't think he was gonna live, so.
No. So anyways, you needed to go back to your son and then just say, hey, I need a couple of other things on the site plan, like we know maybe you're.
Okay.
But I guess it's a, it's a signature line.
Yeah.
Okay, and a place for, uh. What I want, you know, I just wanna get everything in order here, so. Well, he's ready to go, after we get the props planned, uh, he gets his house going, uh, and that's it, you know? Then I wanna go to five acre lot, there are no problems enough, and that's big enough and. You know, the water authority, and you just gotta get a hold of them, this twenty-six hundred function, it's at that road.
Yeah. The minimum one oh one position.
No, come on, I know the one that.
Yeah.
The minimum one oh one. Key?
Yeah, I had offered some comments too, is I think we need a short form E A F before we can complete secret, because it appears to be an unrisked option.
Right.
And I did notice that the frontage of the, uh, lots of the north that we're proposing is sixty feet. And while that raises a zoning variance issue, you have to be comfortable with that frontage as well.
So they're creating a flagline though.
Essentially.
Oh, on the other side of that lot?
Right, yeah.
On the north side?
Yes.
Yeah, see, that's a spot I still wanna own to, I don't know, they're laying in the back.
Oh, I'm not opposed to that.
Yeah.
Own, own all of America, but you're right.
Yeah.
But the code says, the zoning code says that there's supposed to be a hundred feet minimum frontage, and we're proposing sixty feet for that lot. Which would normally require a variance type thing. Code enforcement.
Well, there's a reason I, I gotta, you know, we're just gonna join the with track to confirm that, you know, we're not gonna be told nothing back there.
It still has the hand, it's still.
New York State, New York State code says that you have to have a minimum lot frontage or excess. And that's not saying you can't have it, okay? There's farm access, it's farm access, it's a whole, you know, a whole. And it's, it's appropriate as our term says to have that, but our code has to be superseded by a variance. Okay? So it just means you go to the zoning board. And I'm not gonna have an issue with it, we don't have an issue with it, I guess. We do this all over, you know, try to accommodate residential construction and all this stuff. So, um, anything else? Do we need to have?
No, the, the house plans are whole business entity, and we're already built for a certain date.
That's true.
But we can set them up for, um, if you're going to the zoning board.
We got time, so there's only going up to this one?
Yes.
We getting there?
Yeah, yeah.
So we keep this center on?
We can do it on.
Yeah. I'm gonna, um. You wanna sit down with Cheryl or?
Yeah, I can put them over there.
There and so, and we'll just go over everything you need to have and writing. You know, we have to show you after this is done.
And that, and that, yes.
And, uh, yeah. And then you can deal with the other entities.
Yeah.
See, if we get it ready, get the lot separated off, you know, that, that, with the water authority.
Yeah.
You know, they're pretty simple, they just come out there and they're detached, they're like the twenty-six hundred house, that's it.
Your surveyor may be able to help you with the environmental assessment form?
I don't know, they, they do.
Nothing? There, there is an online, uh, form, uh, with the B E C has.
Mm-hmm.
And you look for a short environmental assessment form, short E A F, and you go online to answer the questions, and then you print it out.
All right. What day would that be, sort of, I might worry the sheriff, come back?
Come back to planning board? Do not know at this moment.
No, I know, you said zoning board, the zoning board.
It will be, um, Tuesday, February, February twenty-second.
All right.
Of this month, they have seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Cause they have changed their hours from seven thirty till seven.
Okay.
Just wanna say yes, you're not forget.
All right. This is the main thing, I'd like to just get the lot over through the business name and then get everything. Like I said, we have the plan, we have everything ready to go, you know, it's pretty, pretty simple, you know, kind of, kind of big delay. What we're doing here is trying to keep going next, get, get it done, then the zoning board and the, and the, for, for when we get to the determination. Yeah, okay, next month, we'll keep the way up here, and, uh.
Will he probably come back to us in April? And say, he's, he's gone, and he's three days.
Yeah, cause he's gonna need public affairs.
Yeah. And he'll have that in mind, and then come to us in.
And come to us on the, oh, that's quickest. We can do it down to the next year one.
All right, okay.
All right, then.
It's still early enough, you guys will be going on.
Yeah.
No, that is, it's still gonna be wet.
Yeah.
Oh, it's wet, yeah, I know.
You know, I saw a fall issue.
Yeah.
I had it, but.
All right, guys.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, I'll.
Thank you, the twenty-sixth then.
Rodney, if you can come in this week at some point, and come in to see it.
You gonna be ordered tomorrow, or?
Yes.
All right, I'll stop for this one.
We'll, 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 if you can ask.
All right, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. You gotta get them in the mix, you get them in the mix, you show them.
San Francisco, till April, till the end of May.
I didn't make the, the.
So what we have is on the agenda, not as a public hearing, but just on the agenda. So we could set the public hearing for April, have it on the agenda for March.
Yes, yes. So you can hear them, and you.
Why don't I make a motion that we call this item until next month?
We won't be in next month.
Well, we need to set a public hearing.
So be April.
Correct, but, um, wanna set public hearing in April, or are we gonna actually set it in March? We have to, we have to publicly say.
He won't be, he won't be before us again until April.
You're not following what I'm saying, sure. I, we can skip ahead and just schedule it for April right now.
We can do it now, okay. All right, unless it's due now.
Yeah, the plans are sufficiently completed, I mean, we're missing the E A F.
Okay, so.
And the variance, and.
Yeah.
If we don't get that, that is a very short year.
Okay, so April fourth.
Okay. So I propose that we set a public hearing for the subdivision land, or my bad name, at, uh, three oh seven Drake Road for April fourth, at seven o'clock. Does it have to be known as a net subdivision?
Yeah, patients are something different than the.
Yeah.
Drives.
I think the drone should be fit.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, remove an item to the end of the agenda for fifty-seven, Westford Home.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, to give a poll of both, um, Morton. We work for Morton, we just, I don't know, Morton.
Table to the next meeting, it's specific there. So we have employee, um, in public hearing, not the, they, they, they. Yeah, let's, let's do that, Linda Sackler, okay?
Yes, she did, and Lynn. Lynn DeRue, yes. Dave Martin?
Yes.
Chris Sawyer?
Yes.
Mark Fallas?
Yes.
Jim Pansett?
Yes. Okay, um. One other item we have is discussion for the solar facilities, because it's seventeen sixty-four, Mark, eleven. Uh, at the beginning of the meeting, uh, uh, the sales pitch for the, uh, factoring up their school to buy an important match. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at this and re-collect, uh, best and thoughts about solar energy? Have we done any of that?
We had an email to them, and we also got a copy of it tonight.
I would, I would suggest the retort, you have an open mind, okay? As a result of the meeting we had last month, we had a resident that was concerned about radiation. High voltage levels and how it could cause certain cancers. We had the exposure and radiation. I spoke offline for it, I said we do a little research on that. I have done some research, just a bit, and a lot. D C voltage is what you get from a solid town. There's no radiation releases of any type, creating D C voltage. But once it gets to be inverted, okay, which can mean that A C voltage, then you can receive small doses of radiation. High tension lines. Big difference between the normal residential people, they get up there and if they see three wires going there, it's, you know, you get high voltage, like that's a high voltage, but it's not high tension, okay? Telephone and electric poles, uh, space usually, uh, certain, uh, confines on the right way, and it's usually with housing setbacks that have always been set thirty, forty, fifty feet away, where the radiation, or the very low radiation, dissipates, okay? That defines most of these houses. This type of voltage is not creating high voltage or significant radiation. Uh, feel free to look up, there's a lot of, uh, on the internet, um. Yeah, prison providers, they, they have a, they have a certain regulation by, uh, association of engineers, they have to go by, and order to where they can put certain lines, like the lines that go through your farm up there, those are high tension lines, okay? And, uh, you, you can have some radiation issues. But, uh, the resident that's here, she has a house right across, and she'll probably be involved at public hearing for this. So I would urge board members, Mr. Supervisor, yourself, you're a little surgeon, if it's all that I provided for tonight, um, she's very sensitive, other people, and she has a child that has been there. So I don't think that, uh, there's, heard something of him in this town, but there's quite, uh, a movement out there throughout the United States for allowing this utility and power producing plants to, uh, deregulate the radiation level. Town was just, uh, and left the classification board also, uh, it's an environmental issue. But I think, uh, but if you have a chance, leave the documentation, uh, and, uh, speak and, uh, talk, do some work out, and put something together. And when we make a decision on solar, uh, it's based on key buildings, okay? Uh, this, this facility is trying to help improve the third one. Under the request of the, uh, next, uh, zoning board workshop, if, if we, uh, explore a moratorium on any more, uh, basically to look at the storage, storage issue, where the electricity, and where the electricity is being produced and the pound going on in places.
Just so, I don't interrupt you, but our next town board meeting, we're gonna probably have a moratorium on storage biddies. I've already talked to J P and our I N R attorney of audit, so you'll probably see it in our next town board meeting, a one-year moratorium on the stored biddies, cause there's so much that isn't known. Fire departments are nervous about them with the potential of, you know, electrical fires, just how hot they are and everything. What you can put those stored biddies in houses and the garage for the smaller sector houses. And that thing hurt those, that house is going up quick.
So you also have to worry about blast fires, and we did quite a few blast fires in the United States. They're involved, solar facilities, what's all in that goes. Okay, there is a lot, I, I talked to Ron Brad, he did a little bit of, uh, bidding and, uh, including websites, and there's, it's played, but information out there. Uh, but there might need to be some additional training. My urging would be is maybe a moratorium on solar facilities, so we can incorporate it all. Just my advice. And my P three, do you have any more?
Not really, I, I know the state has been pushing to take over solar farms, pretty much. That may yet come, but failing that, we do it to find.
Do they have the potential to explore?
Just like, I think, then that's what we need to explore, I guess. I think almost like, you know, a, a truck barrier, a car barrier cannot explode. And if it's overcharged or whatever, I remember the back years ago, we charged, uh, jumped a six volt barrier to twelve volt.
And if it gets overcharged or whatever, I remember back years ago, we charged, uh, jumped a six volt barrier to twelve volt, and maybe.
A lead, a lead cell battery, that's hydrogen, come off, the little air bubbles, when you charge the battery, that's pure hydrogen. Can you ever build a battery like that?
No.
Especially when it's solar. Yeah, but that's pure, that's pure hydrogen, yeah, well, true flame.
The hydrogenous materials, uh, solar farms is more, you know, uh, high heat, if there's a gas player, uh, what does need a woman? Actually, she did a player, okay, and what does, so, which is melts, okay? The materials that the panels are made out of are also given in her nature of the N F T camera, okay? Class about this, and some of the other stuff, uh, so there is some reason to do some additional training. I mean, you might wanna play a further with foam, okay, other than, you know, and I have another issue with foam now. So they're developing different types of snappers, like, chemicals in it. So, anyways, it's, it's a good thing we visited, and it was a good question, what's going on, that they asked me, and I'd like to be able to incorporate some of those questions in the approval process. Especially training, are these training opportunities for after? So I know Phil and I are doing farm protection, we actually will probably, after our next board meeting, we have to do a resolution. We hope to head it to Monroe County by next week, we hope so, we hope so. Monroe County, and I know they're to say to anything, move forward, to grant anything, and start it, but, yeah. But we were looking at this thing at seventeen sixty four, and wish we could say where on that property. Cause that's what, we were talking, is that's like sixty acres or something, that whole, the order is fifty five. The back end, it's wet. If they could have put that solar farm back there, you could still find Sandy Lom in the front half, you can still, I mean, for a twenty five acre solar farm now, you would have taken out sixty acres out of farm. What, I wish we could somehow, and maybe that's what we're talking about, is changing the law, maybe saying, okay, put it here instead of there. If we're gonna look at soil types and everything, and I wish if we put it back farther, then you could still find our farm, and then.
Until you get a firm way of protection, from, as you documented, if you don't have a state, you can't own a property, because you, you know, it's bad. By the true meaning, I don't know, I don't know, it's not the new process, and if you won't be able to grow for this, what kind of farm, solar farm, that one, so.
Well, I don't know.
I've, I've seen some on federal wetlands.
You have to go on federal wetlands, yeah?
Yeah, because they're, they're not considered high quality wetland, but.
I can see a drop meshed on a solar.
Well, they, they, they'd probably be pretty happy underneath.
Underneath, yeah.
Um, you know, and I, and I guess, you know, you get into, like it or not, the, the, people have rights to use their land. And a farmer, if he chooses not to farm any longer, and I'm seeing it everywhere, so it's, it's mostly farmers that own lots of property, that are going, are, are leasing, or putting these in, so I mean.
Yeah, that was taken out, you know, a, a liberal.
We have, uh, one more on the agenda, you know, just cancel that, and, uh, do it by next month, and pay more. The folks are willing, uh.
A discussion, always a discussion for seventeen sixty four, um, I do.
No, we're talking about the generator. Uh, fifty seven hundred, uh, Westwood Home, we want to put a, uh, a generator within twenty two foot of the lake. Because my question is, is that high water or low water? And those things are really waterproof.
It's only placed twelve inches above the ground. So, method is following us.
Yeah, but the only thing, because you realize where the, where the, a storm, and a spray, and a winter time, and it goes thirty five to forty, forty. Because we have to look at health, safety, and welfare of the communities, and I'm not sure twenty two foot from the lake. Even though the manufacturer said I can put one right there, I'm not so sure that's good, it's bad, I don't know. I don't know why you would want an old plant.
Well, what's the olive oil, I guess?
But, uh, two thousand seventeen, and road behind it, what about on your water?
Two fifty slow.
Wow, I want my children to be.
Well, it's, uh, places.
Yeah. Yeah.
Lakes, lakes, lakes are high, which, you know. But it's, it's not, yeah, the lakes aren't high, but they're, you know, they're, they're managed, but some of them.
Well, they had to go for the sea high, and they're, and they've already received that. And I said, spoken to the sea high, and the sea high left at fifty eight, the city. And they told me that they put it in the front yard, along this straight side, because also in the front. It had three ways to fall inches because of the flood.
And it, it appeared from the application that it was a, either propane or natural gas, so you're not having diesel fuel or gas, they're in storage.
It is natural gas, correct.
In the water, which is, which is better than there being in a storage tank.
But what are we gonna, what are we gonna do with those?
I don't think in the motion, we don't have to have a public hearing, so we'll just, we'll just table.
You just have cable up and pull them out of the gym, or that's.
Yeah.
You know, and everything just comes up in the middle of the gym, but till we come, we're not going for four months. Yeah.
They're seeking the, the, uh, the, uh, conservation of the district park.
I want to talk over to this. Sure. Over to this.
Yeah.
Uh, I think that we have a real problem on the corner, we have, uh, drug dispensaries. There are cars over there, like, all over. Anytime of day or night. There are two or three people working on automobiles inside and outside. That was not what they do in the last week. Now, we're making these people who are going to come in and give us a really nice place. We're making them dance to every tune of the year. And then this guy in the corner just ignores anything that we ask.
Well, I think the only way you can deny that permit is through a public work running, and that's. Which permit are we talking about now?
I just want to be trapped only.
So you're talking about the, the special use permit?
Yeah, um, this is after the special permit, which is exciting, I think, I'm not sure about.
Yeah, it's a commercial site, okay.
Now, in the motion, it was, it was discussed in the minutes. Um, what he was going to use a garage for, for, he said he would use a garage for his own vehicles. There was nothing in the motion saying he could do that, or he couldn't do that. Um, in other words, it was sent out this week to the owner of the property. He said he didn't do it this time, I just sent it to him, and that's, now, for the rental also. And then, um, probably in the power and the vehicle too. And I do think that, okay, it's not a, 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 a.
Is it, and maybe it's, it's not the goal, right?
I don't see why I'd talk about this, but it's always.
We're starting, I've had so much going on with assessors leaving everything and all this, but. We're, I told her to start cracking down on them. Start giving the, enough letters and everything to them, whether we can do something like the city does. Where they shut a business down or whatever, when we have so many complaints, if we have so many complaints and stuff. I don't know, I have to talk to, I asked Maureen, but she's got that from vacation too, and. She's been really busy, but we're trying to start to crack down on them right now. And with all this vehicles, I mean, I called up the owner of the property when they had that big trailer sitting out there. And told him, you got one day to move that trailer, otherwise I will, because right now if somebody gets killed at that intersection, that big trailer blocking the site plan. I'll have the police there with me, so you tell that person. And that night at ten o'clock, you got moved.
Yeah, we got, we both, I called. It got moved to the, to, um, a little highway up to the cemetery, the trailer that's there. It got moved to that location, and now there is a renter, he was renting that trailer to the owner, and that's his trailer.
And now you got a pickup truck sitting there, that there, and a trailer, and that's why.
I saw it, I mean.
I made the folders of that, the folders yesterday, too.
I did, I, I witnessed the trailer, the trailer go through a red light. And people, other than Lord. Okay, didn't see it, and he stopped, and they were asking. If that trailer would have hit that car, because the car didn't see it, right, and so they're like, yeah, he's doing fifty five, yeah, fifty four. It would have been another fatality at that, at that point.
Right.
That's what I'm saying, it's not.
I think, we got trucking in there today, and I saw, I just saw it today, but, I mean. The, the snow is also piled up next to the road. We're trying to keep that area clean years ago, so you can see around there. So we might get to, with all the vehicles parked there, we might get to discuss about snow removal too.
The owner of that business, we moved from three different locations, three different times. We let him come in there with open arms, if we could do anything about it. Because there's so many holes in our code. That's where we got to start, we got to start to update our code. There's nothing that we could do, and then the fire marshal, the fire marshal was told to come up there, and we first started. Checking the fire extinguisher, he's on a fireproof door, and it's like, yeah, and the guy wouldn't let him run in the apartment. And he's getting away with everything. He's getting away with everything, and he's not good for the, for the community. It's not going to be trying to run a business that way in a church place, and I don't feel like he fits. The head places are eyesore to the community, we should all really be ashamed of it. How do we go about moving it through?
Facility opening, they, they don't know what it was supposed to do. It's hard, like, all over them, they have parking instructions to where they park vehicles there. They ignore that, it's, they're parked by owners.
I don't know if we can start having vehicles towed if they're parked in the wrong spot. Maybe you would know Keith, I can get the police there and start towing the vehicles.
Do you have a sentence that says you're trying to buy solar, whatever, you can take temporary possession of that corner. To claim if somebody's been, uh, DOT, said you, but, you know, accident, you have to reuse your code.
I don't even know if we need DOT, can't our fire marshal do the same thing, like be claiming an emergency or something at that corner?
Possible.
I know we've used him a couple of times going on private property and stuff, and helped him open up roads, like down on the lakefronts.
I used to go on private property all the time, and you just don't. All the time.
I heard said that in the motion, uh, you did say you have some multiple hours, too.
You deal with two hours, you're the owner, right?
They both get the license, so they're both aware, but you did say no parking in front of the store.
Yeah, there's been plenty of stipulations stated in that claim, and they've all been overlooked.
Has he gone to court?
How many times? In Canada?
The business shop. They're ordering the rest.
On that same note, and I don't, I'm not sure about the proposal of Quickleys. What they've got there for, uh, barrier between that parking lot and, and the house to the north. What I can foresee there being a problem there, if there's not a fence. Buffering between those two properties, I can see where they'll have cars just driving through, if it's just a green space. I can see, I can see the patrons to the business driving through the parking lot, through the green space. It's just, to me, it's, it would be a concern for Quickleys. Where there should be a distinct division of properties.
JP, you're working on it?
Yeah, I'm helping, uh, that engine, yeah.
No, I'm serious.
Yeah, I'm done.
I could see there being issues there down the road, if, if this continues the way it has been here, you know.
There's another, there's another option, where, where, where you want to air zone, um, they could go to zone and ask for an equal pass. I'm just saying, six foot pass is allowable, but they, they, they could. Outside, that's for me, just so.
Or you could require that they put that to the planning board here, and then push them to go to the zoning board or do that. I would think the zoning board would like that, so you can force the.
You're going to hear some discussion in the race, so.
Yeah, there's a few, um, there are odds and ends to, yeah.
But we also want to be careful if you're going to put in the residents in the house, what they have outside, which you might block from view either. The other thing I noticed, they'd seen further agents cross by on the. Yeah, there's maybe a water. No, I'm just saying, I mean, it is a, it's a, it's a, usually, usually will ask for the courses. And if they, and if that suffice, that's bad.
Right.
They get something like that.
I heard, I heard, I heard.
There's, there's major water lines coming up nineteen, of course, and, and we have a major water line going out eighteen. At least, and a small one going to the west.
You have a plenty of water, you've got fourteen or fifteen, that's going right up to nineteen.
There can't be a hydrogen further than four hundred feet.
Right.
There's water right down in eighteen. There's a, a, a.
Yeah, that's right, yes. I was trying to think, we're doing one around the corner.
Yeah, that, that concerns. I don't want to replace regular one, but it wasn't, yeah. Does anybody else have anything, I know, um, Cheryl, you discussed something about the two day. Problem we're running into with C P.
The seventeen sixty four specifically, um, probably entities that we have the same, are related to, for, uh, that place. They don't have, uh, there's only, they don't have D E S, you know, everything on electronic. Still have, yet to get it from next year, and they seem to be having a problem, they need to send it to everyone, like send it to me. We have to have the, the email address, and they have to do the special code. And the code's going to see if it gets, and it doesn't seem to work, so we've only gotten one letter back.
Don't we have, doesn't probably find the required, uh, D E S now?
Not that I have, I'm not that I have, but I think it was, the D E C is under the issue. Yes, the, yes, the, um, yes, no, it doesn't, does.
I, I.
But I haven't had a problem with that.
I, I just couldn't tell you. Your responsibility is to coordinate with you and circulate. Part, part two, you don't tend to be the, yeah, in, in circulate part.
Which I have.
Circulate your documents. It does, there's no stipulation in secret that needs to be electronic. So if you've given it to them in paper copy, you've done, you've done.
The law has already started.
And which I, and which I have already done that.
And it's not the applicant's responsibility to coordinate with you, it's, it's you as the reviewer, you need to coordinate with you. So they don't, if you, if they, out of their kindness, provide you electronic documents, great.
Yeah, they were, yeah.
But that's not their responsibility. It's, it's the college's responsibility to coordinate with you. And all you have to do is write paper, that's, there's no state requirement.
But the comments that I heard, yeah, when somebody people that we make these, they're interested in these. They don't know what to do, uh, they don't know what to, um, people is, uh.
Which is fine, actually.
Then they, they have no, they have no interest in the project, apparently.
Yeah, so we have, we have written back for them, we just assume that they're, they're finding what we do.
The legal, the legal requirement is to send those, and you have to give them thirty days. Customarily, we would go to the applicant, particularly for the big projects, which we really don't have the ability to replicate and follow. And say, give us X number of sets in a paper, and we'll ship them. And we should, and we should ship them, I know sometimes I have to farm it out to the applicant, I just have to. And the county has started taking electronic versions for reverse. So if you're set up to do that anyway, it's often easy just to email the whole thing out to the various agencies if you're set up to do that and you're willing to accept it. But the law's really about mail and print style.
And, and then you're going to get the opposite, where people are going to say, I can't, what am I going to do with this document? I can't print, I can't read it, so I want a piece of paper, so.
It's, it's a hell of a lot easier reading plans where, that are distorted, than trying to swink at the screen, yeah.
Do we need the document, uh, that you're responding?
No.
No, thirty days.
You just need to address anything that anybody responded to you.
Absolutely, yes.
Gee, thanks for letting us be moved agency.
No, we don't, we don't owe them a response.
You don't start it off.
No, we, we have to address a conditional approval. Now, if they ignore the, the filing, that's where, that makes life easier.
Which is usually how it goes.
Yes.
Usually there's, you send out, according to review to all these agencies, and none of them respond, so we said, we're sending out all these, and. These people had no objections, these people had no objections, and all the others didn't respond. So we've gone ahead to the lead agency and made it, you know, very, very.
So, so, no. So, so, no, thank you.
No, you should, uh, that's, you're going. And you can't keep everybody, all this.
The different side, the different side, yeah.
No, took me a while, so, uh.
I was just being shit.
Oh, I agree, yeah.
Anything, anybody else want to share this, uh, with me, or?
Um, the, the, we've got, we've got together, can I do a copy of this?
A white paper?
Yeah, I got my head. I'll, I'll put it up there, yep, I'm done.
You like the work, I mean, good.
Can you do it?
Yes.
Get my?
For you guys.